Recording in progress. All the way to the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Lawrence?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ceremonial matters. Sarah, could you come forward please? Okay, so Sarah runs the Community Resource Center and she does a amazing job and so we want to thank her and acknowledge her. The city council wants to take this moment to acknowledge you. Sarah, you know that there are people who were made to do certain jobs, people who go above and beyond, people who not only have the right mindset for the determination, tenacity, and most importantly, the heart to do those jobs well. Sarah, you are one of those people, or you are one of such persons. While we all know that running a community resource center can be rewarding and energizing, we also know that it can be difficult, emotionally taxing, chaotic, sometimes even scary and thankless. But Sarah, through it all, you have not only done it well, but you have found joy in it. You always, almost always, wear a smile on your face, which in turn puts a smile on the faces of the people who come through that door. You and your staff have created a warm, welcoming, and helpful environment for all of the citizens of Riedel, and really for anyone who has a need regardless of their address. You've provided people at any level a safe place to work on resolutions and difficult issues dealing with Medicare or Medi-Cal, social security, living spaces, and so on. Or just even a safe place to simply be without judgment. So, thank you Sarah, thank you to your staff for creating a community resource center that has become a pillar of Riedel, a community resource center that is about one thing, having a happy, healthy, and solid community. That's from the Riedel City Council with a certificate of appreciation for selfless dedication to the Community Resource Center for creating a warm, welcoming, safe, and nonjudgmental, and inclusive atmosphere. The Riedel City Council wishes to acknowledge and thank you. Oh, someone should take a picture. Sarah, get back up here.
I'm on it.
Gotta take a picture, have a photo. And nailed it. Alright, thank you. Thank you Sarah. Now we're gonna move on to the public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and of or which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Round and Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council?
I just wanted to get in first because Sharon Wolf, Three Pingers Street in Riedel, and I just wanted to say thank you to our Community Resource Center and Sarah and your small but mighty crew for all that they've done. Every time we have asked either the state or the county or the local government has asked our Community Resource Centers to step up with services, they always have, and gone far beyond. We are going to be asking a lot more of our Community Resource Centers as they're implementing family-first prevention services throughout the county. We are going to be asking a lot more of our resource centers and we have, we have been in a good position to do this going forward because we have such an awesome resource center going forward. So, I just want to say that and thank you and thank you sir. Thank you Sharon.
Can you tell her your name?
Steven Saunders. My house is at 762 Rigby Avenue, and I live there. Water's not been on there since the very first earthquake. And I'm really quite surprised, to be honest with you, that nobody, nobody has said, you know what? This is a really crappy thing we're doing to Steve Saunders. He hasn't lived there. He doesn't have any water. His current sewer bill is $323.95, okay? I get these threatening cards in the mail. We're gonna send you the collection. You know, we're gonna get an 840, 840 credits for it, okay? Eight fifty's die as it goes. I pay my bills. This, somebody needs to write an amendment, okay, that says something like, in the case of an emergency, in the case of an earthquake or whatever, and the homeowner is not allowed and not able, not even able, not allowed to live in this house. We should have, this is a little amendment, you do not have to pay your sewer bill until your water gets turned back on. Does anybody think that's fair? Does anybody think this is fair to me? Anybody? No, it's not fair, okay? It's what I'm gonna ask for is that we put something on the agenda to address this so it doesn't happen in the future. Does that make sense? I would like to make a motion to do that. The other thing I'm gonna ask for is that I'm gonna ask for donations, okay? And you can leave the donations at the community center with Sarah if that's okay with her, okay? Because hopefully I'll be in my house this year, hopefully by July, and I'll be more than happy to pay my sewer bill. But this is really ridiculous, and everybody here knows it, okay? Some people here really care. I'm just not sure if everybody cares enough to do something about this. This is really ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to put that on the agenda?
I'd like to put that on the agenda.
Is the city manager online?
Oh, I think he might be. I think I see Kyle now up there. Don't have my glasses on. Okay, yeah. Do you want to ask him one more question?
I don't, I think it's just the consensus. But if he's longer, then we could talk to him as well.
City manager, are you available? Can you, can you key yourself in? And unmute yourself if you can. I'm not sure. I will, but I will make sure that he gets the, that we have the consensus.
It's your fault.
Yeah. So, we will put that on the agenda. Is there anyone else who would like to? So, did you understand that we did a consensus to put that on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else like to have anything that they want to say before we close public presentation? Are there any hand raised, any emails? Then we will close public presentation and move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item that someone would like to pull from the consent calendar? Number four, or four, okay. Anyone else there? No? Anyone in the public wants to pull anything from the consent calendar? Okay, then is there a motion to approve items one, two, and three of the consent calendar?
So much.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, reading about the trees that were being planted, I just found out going through the agenda that we're gonna have to take out all the trees. And I thought when we first planned it that it was just gonna be the ones that were really bad, and that really bothers me. I mean, we waited this long to get these nice trees on, and now we're starting all over. We have some beautiful cherry trees and some of the other trees down there. And I'm disappointed, but I just wanted to state my disappointment in that at the last minute I found out that everything's going.
Right, and I'm, you know, I'm a tree person. I'm very disappointed. That was the plan that was put to the state of California. The grant staff came back and said they all have to go.
I know, but I'm disappointed that I find out in my agenda that there will be change.
That's important to me, that those trees stay, the ones that were good, like cherry trees. And I think that the city manager is looking at, he has spoken to the contractor to get a pricing of what it would cost to pull the trees instead of killing the trees off, but to actually pluck them out. And that's in the works too. Okay, so.
Yeah, I have a plan because that part's, it'll be, that's all. Yeah, so this is the state has a requirement that we have to, this is all the trees in the center. Where are the trees?
The gateway from, from the entry to the, to the city.
Yes.
Down to Davis.
Down to Davis. The, and is that because of the fact that the soil roots?
My understanding is that the state granted, awarded the grant. They get to say how many trees, the trees have to be there. We don't get, we have to follow what the grant tells us. So, it is not my understanding that the state has an issue with how they're planted. My understanding is the state wants the trees that they intend to pay for, and they want them all, those trees. And my, that it is that there's so much concern about, you know, what happens to the trees that are there.
I would like to request that we have a better clarification. It's, prefer to, you know, the city manager be back as well. And then we get a better clarification, because this is my first knowledge of it too. I understand, you know, I understand the issue that we've had previously about, because the Ohio Highway went through there, and you can only go down so far and you can get it for the reaching thing. But as far as trees that have been, anyway. I would like to go to understanding that before we actually implement tearing these out. Because I don't think we're in the, we're in the, prefer to losing the grant if we don't do something in the next month or so, Travis?
The grant fires on the 30th of June. So, it is, we're on a pretty tight timeline to get the contract executed and get the work started.
But as far as taking, physically taking them out.
They, they have to take them out to plant the new ones.
Yeah, like in their stated in the grant, there's a certain number of trees that we're obliged to plant. And so, that requires the removal of certain trees in the median. And so, as part of the application, they require that all those trees be removed with the city having a choice of their own expense to try to uproot them and save them, you know, to donate or to give away.
Anyhow, I still would like to get a better clarification on this, understanding of what's going on.
I'd agree. Okay, so, so I'm clear. So, you want to pull this and?
I'm not asking to pull it. I'm asking to get a?
No, I understand that, just you want a better clarification.
A little better clarification and rather than, we read this tonight, on Tuesday, the trees are pulled up and gone, and we haven't, we haven't even, we haven't moved ahead with the, we're authorizing this other outfit to come in and start planting trees. Is that correct?
Yes, they are going to do the gateway. They will remove and they will also be planting the trees that are coming in. The issue really is, at this point, the issue is timing. So, if we don't meet the timing, we, and we start it, let's say in March, or whatever, and we don't meet the timing, we are going to owe the state $148,94, $984. And it's not gonna matter whether, to the state, whether or not we pull the trees or didn't pull the trees, or whatever reason that we had that we felt very, you know, we were serious about our contention, but it won't matter that we were serious about the intention. What will matter is we didn't meet the deadline of the grant.
When is, when are they scheduled to start?
Well, this is just to getting it, getting the award of the contract. The contract hasn't been awarded yet. That's what the case is about.
So then if they don't have, we have another council meeting, at least one, at least one if not two, that we can get clarification on this?
Absolutely.
Then, then we don't have to go up, somebody's not gonna have to come out and start clearing out the trees, like I say, next to you. Is that correct?
That is correct, well.
I mean, we haven't, we haven't actually awarded them, we're authorizing the award of the grant to J and G, J and G Don't Care to do that. Are they, they haven't set a timeframe to start work at this point?
Not to, not to my knowledge, but I don't, I can't imagine they started, they've created a start date, but they don't have a contract.
Right, so we do have the ability for this?
We have absolutely the ability to say, let's hold off.
We have another meeting in the week that has a better clarification of it. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
This amount doesn't include taking out the trees, so. This amount does not, so carefully. So, will we also award that to them? Or they, my understanding is that it would be a change order. No matter how we do it, it will be the city's responsibility, that part of it, be the city, on the city's budget, to take those out, to pluck them out so that they are viable trees. And so, I think this is not about how they're gonna take the tree, well, this is actually the, they're gonna take the trees out and prescribed by the, by the grant. We can have a meeting, the, the, the contract can be executed by the city manager with a change order, because there would have to be a change order no matter what, to pluck the trees out. I don't know if they would be the company that, or, or?
Well, elaborate with another question. Finish your sentence.
No, I'm done.
Finish what you're saying.
No, no, I'm done.
So, the change order, we have to get a change order to take the trees out?
Yes, because that was not a part of the original bid package.
Like removing that root ball.
Right, that's the change. That's the change. Removing the root ball, taking them out so that they stay viable trees. Because as, as the contract was written, the trees just are gone, because that's what the state required. That wasn't the original thought, but then the state came back and that's what they required. That means I go wrong anyway.
Correct.
So, when the state came back and said, we need, we need all the trees gone and put in, and, and we needed, the new trees needed to be planted in their place. That then became, that's pretty much the pathway to getting the grant, because that's what the state mandated from us. That was not a good, it wasn't a good idea, you know, from, I don't think any of our standpoint, but the only way to get around it is for the city to do a change order, ask the contractor to take the trees, the root balls up and out safely, remaining viable, keeping those trees viable. And that will be a change order, no matter what. There's no way around it.
A change order, in order to take the trees out, whether we throw them into a chipper or what, is a change order. Is that correct?
No, only if we pluck them out to save them. That is the change order. Cutting the trees out, ripping the trees out, just, you know, killing the trees to get them out, that is what the state has mandated, get the trees out, pretty much, bottom line. But because that wasn't the original council ID plan, the city manager has asked the company if they have the machinery and the, and the ability to take them out, take their root ball out and save the trees. That would be a change order. So, this award of the contract and the change order that would have to be in place to get the trees plucked out are two separate things. So.
Do we know what that costs?
That's what we're waiting for, that to come back, from the, from the company. That's what we're waiting for, that information to come back regarding what the cost will be. My understanding is that they don't have to kill the particular trees right away. They don't have to, there's others, you know, there's?
There's other spots that could be worked.
Right. And so, if we award the contract so that they can get going, they are coming back. The city manager has requested that information, that, that cost estimate. When that comes back, then we would have a, a, on the change order.
Okay.
I'm just gonna speak up here real quickly. We tried to go back to the state and say, hey, can we, and we have gone back and forth with them a few times about trying to tweak the number of trees, and it was just a no.
I mean, I understand the importance of taking them, taking them out alive and moving them if we can, but I think the bigger picture is why three of us didn't find out the report back that came out that this was the only thing.
Well.
It's been on the agenda.
It's been on the agenda. The ad hoc committee, we had a conversation with the city manager, and then it gets on the agenda, and then we have the discussion. It, it wasn't?
Is there a consent calendar before?
That they were coming out, that it had to be changed for them to be pulled alive?
I wanna say?
I know the approval for the bid has been on there a couple times because we had to go back and forth about the cost of bid. I know more about the communication on the council because it doesn't seem, I mean, last week or last?
The communication is within the packets. We get the packet, we review the packet, we come in, we talk to the city manager, then we come to the meeting, which will be today, and we have this conversation amongst us in the public, whether or not we want to go forward or whether or not we don't. But it isn't, if you know, so here it was in the packet.
Okay.
Packet came out Friday. So, you know, we have a chance to come in and talk to the city manager to get an explanation. Everything isn't discussed with the entire council before meetings unless the council member themselves reads it in the packet and comes in and discusses it with staff. And then you have your discussion, you get your full information, then we come here, and we sit down and we talk about it, and we make the discussion and we make the decision. So, it isn't, it was, it's not sneaky because it's right here.
I'm not saying sneaky, and I'm not talking about violating any acts. I'm just saying that an email that said, hey, there's been a significant change to this proposal.
I'll speak up here. Kyle was here. He didn't leave till today. So, he, I was in his office already. So, I, I will, I don't want to take up too awful much time on a, on a consent thing when we have people here to talk about other stuff, but I found out about this, what was like two weeks ago, something like that, and we did meet with the ad hoc multiple times. I was in Kyle's office for at least an hour and a half with Travis going back and forth. What about this? What about that? And my understanding is that we were kind of backed into a corner on this. And so, what we were gonna do was really try to circumvent being backed into a corner by saving the trees and, and either moving them somewhere else on city property, and if there is absolutely nowhere else they can go on city property, I will happily take one of those trees and put it in my home yard because they are beautiful. And we thought maybe the community wants some trees. But we haven't heard back on that yet. What I'm wondering is if we pass this now, we can still go back and get the cost on this and talk more about?
That's in the process.
Yes.
The, the question has been put on the, to the contractor, what the cost would be, and so.
But we can still pass this.
Right.
And then still receive further clarification. Like, we're not just committing, like, we can still get further clarification. Now, I'm? Now, I think we really, there's a general consensus to put it off till the next meeting. I'm okay with that too, but I don't think that this consent item is going to lock us in to showing up tomorrow with chainsaws and welding the trees.
No.
I was, I was.
One, I would like to wait two weeks while that may break as, as I feel. And that's what I do, and yeah.
Well, I didn't understand the council to approve. Is that what you're asking to do?
Me? No, to wait for the two weeks. To wait, yes, that, yes, to wait until February 28th.
So, so are we asking to approve this again tonight or?
No, no. What, uh, my understanding is that Julie's motioning would be.
I was just, we're doing a consent, so I just.
Yeah, well, I think it would actually, because of Tira, it would have to be a motion.
I'd like to move the votes, phone the vote on this item until the next council.
I said that. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Motion carries three, two. Reports with staff communications. Um, normally the city manager would tell us, um, you know, what he's been up to and as soon as I can slide that page, I'll tell you what he's been up to. He attended a score meeting in Anderson on the 26th, attended a solid waste local task force in Eureka on the 22nd of January, uh, coordinated and led a point in time homeless count on the 23rd. Over the course of the morning, nine individuals were identified, um, during the count that are experiencing homelessness in the Riedel social area. Currently, he is, um, at the airport being delayed trying to get to the city manager's conference. And, um, the city manager, the wastewater superintendent, attended the final planned set meeting on the 25th for the water sit program. The project is still on time and expected to be sent out for bid soon. Uh, I don't know that the city manager can, when we tried to get him to come into the meeting before, he was unable to apparently, so, um, I will ask the city manager, is there anything that you would like to say? If you can hear us, can, or communicate with us rather, would you unmute yourself and communicate? Do you have a, oh, you're stuck. I'm going to say you cannot. So, um, that's the city manager's schedule. Is there any questions from staff, uh, from the council, from the rest of the staff?
All right, I have one.
Mayor.
I just want to say I'm glad Kyle is at the city manager's conference because this is his chance as a city manager to talk about what we experienced, um, last winter with earthquakes and storms and kind of tell our story to, um, people in other jurisdictions. And I think that's important, so, um, if you can't answer, that's okay. That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Um, Public Works Wastewater, how have your last few weeks been?
Wet.
Yeah.
Got a lot of water, a lot of inflow and infiltration. It's impacting the boats of the plant. We're doing our best to keep them happy. They do not like a lot of dissolved oxygen that comes into the ground. We're taking rainwater, but the influx and infiltration.
I thought about you guys a lot as it was more recovery and flooding. And I thought, oh man, um, and how lucky we are to have such wonderful people watching out for us and for our infrastructure and keeping tabs on things so that the rest of us get to stay in our homes and still have flushing toilets. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Oh, so, and I just wanted to, I, I like your update. It's very thorough and I think it's been good. Thank you for being such a thorough, um, question. And, um, yeah, that's it. Brian, anything? Brian?
No, I'm, I'm.
Tom. Tom, Tom, yeah, any questions?
My air, I just, um, I'm going to that because it's not. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to, to acknowledge that the police department has been cleaning up the town, going down, doing some fabulous work, getting drugs and weapons out of, off the Riedel streets, you know, and, um, we appreciate it. We're proud to know you. We're proud of you and thank you for, um, standing out there and, uh, taking care of business. Are there anyone from the public who would like to ask a question about the staff report? Are there any hand raised? Okay, then I will close the staff report. And. Page, oh, that's not that. Page on the paper. Special call items. Provide staff direction regarding a letter of opposition on measure A, the Humboldt County Cannabis Reform Initiative, page 33 in our packet. This was something that I asked, um, the city manager to look at and, um, bring forward and our, um, so on March 5th of the Cal, 2024, the California Presidential Primary Election includes a local ballot initiative entitled Measure A, Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative. Attached to, attached to the packet, to the draft, a letter drafted in opposition to measure A. The opposition letter also has been requested by legal cannabis operators in the city of Riedel. Proponents and opponents of the measure have been invited to the council meeting. It should be noted that measure A passed has no direct impact on legal cannabis land use decisions or policy within the boundaries of the city of Riedel. However, the success or failure of the legal cannabis industry in unincorporated Humboldt County does have some degree of impact on cultivation serving businesses, potential value added cannabis processing businesses, interest in cannabis investments within Riedel, and general economic activity within Riedel. The degree of this economic impact on Riedel, either positive or negative, is not quantified. And I believe that we have someone here to speak on behalf and, and in opposition and in. Not proposition, proposition. Um, sorry, I'm looking for my, um, my words. But our choices are either to approve the letter drafted, amend the letter, and prove, take no action on the letter, or direct staff to direct a letter in support of measure A. Hello, Jesse.
Hello, hello. Good evening, uh, council, city council members. My name is Jesse Jeffries. I would like to take this time to address measure A, its origin and the impact on the small farmer. I'm an owner of multiple cannabis farms in Humboldt County and the city of Riedel. While the proponents of measure A have stated it's, it's to benefit the small farmer, this is far, far from the truth. Small farmers were not involved in the drafting of this initiative. This initiative was created by two individuals out of San Francisco attorney. If this initiative was drafted with the small farmer and environmental concerns in mind, then landowners, environmental groups, community members, policymakers, and council members would have been involved in the drafting process of measure A. It has taken many years to draft the current cannabis ordinance in Humboldt County. The current cannabis ordinance already addresses all the proposed changes. This, the initiative seeks to change. The initiative portrays that cultivation in Humboldt County is rapidly growing and needs even more regulation in an already overregulated industry. As overregulation has already played a role in putting small farmers out of business. While the current ordinance is not perfect, it is effective and was created with input from community members, environmental groups, and other regulatory agencies. Environmental policies are already in place to protect residents, neighborhoods, landowners, wildlife, and watersheds. Measure A is not only about the cannabis industry. It's an attack on landowners' private property rights and land use designation. To say measure A is to keep mega grows out of Humboldt County is at best disingenuous. There are no mega grows in Humboldt County. I'm asking this board to support no on measure A as this initiative was not drafted with unity from the community and its members. We need to make decisions as a community and not allow two disgruntled individuals to change the course of the cannabis policy in Humboldt County. The last couple of years have already impacted the local farmers and this initiative will negatively impact our community as a whole. Thank you for your consideration and please, and please support no on measure A. Thank you.
Hello.
Well, uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm the policy director with Humboldt County Germs Alliance. Uh, so we're the trade association that represents current cannabis operators, uh, here in Humboldt County. And really appreciate the opportunity to talk about measure A tonight. Uh, we are opposed to measure A and asking for you to endorse a no position on measure A. Um, I feel like now is a really important time, um, you know, early voting mail ballots were mailed yesterday, so we're now in the, the pick of election season. Um, and completely agree with, uh, the comments by the commenter before me. Um, I think a large part of this discussion is really about a collaborative approach to cannabis regulation in the county. Um, as the previous speaker mentioned, we have very, very exhaustive, very, very detailed cannabis ordinances in the county that were developed with input from farmers, from environmental groups, from neighborhoods, from law enforcement, uh, from county and state regulators. And measure A is 38 pages of very, very detailed law, um, that really comprehensively rewrite all, rewrite all of those ordinances and does that without any of that public input. And, and I think you receive, see that reflected in the list of, of votes that have come out against measure A. Um, so those include, uh, the sheriff, uh, they include Arcade and Eureka City Councils. They include, um, the Humboldt Democratic, Republican, and Green Parties, um, sort of an unprecedented agreement, uh, that they did not, uh, the way to regulate cannabis in our county. Um, also includes chambers of commerce in McKinleyville, uh, Willow Creek, Eureka, and Southern Humboldt, um, and really a much, much longer list of leaders within our community. Um, and it's really the outcome of a lack of collaborative process which led to this initiative drafting. Um, just to be briefly about what's so concerning within the initiative. Uh, it's not about regulating cannabis. We have very, very stringent regulations currently in both the county and state level. Um, it's, you can call it micromanaging cannabis, and I, I would go even further to say it's really punitive toward cannabis. So the initiative really wants to stop the expansion of cannabis. An expansion is defined in the initiative to include any increase in water usage, energy usage, or the number or size of any structure used in connection with cultivation. So this initiative is really trying to micromanage farms right down to, are they building a barn? Or a drying shed? Or are they trying to build some infrastructure on site, maybe to facilitate tourism on the farm? So, um, this is all discussed really extensively in, in the Humboldt County Climate Department's report on measure A, uh, which I know is in the agenda packet and is really comprehensive. Um, and what that report concludes is that measure A is so burdensome that it'll make the legal industry not viable in Humboldt. Um, this is not just an initiative about new cultivation. It affects every single farmer in the county, regardless of their size, and, and does it in a way that would have really, um, devastating effects on the industry here. Um, and as I think was mentioned, it is true. This initiative only applies to the unincorporated county. Um, it doesn't directly impact law, um, within the city of Riedel. Um, but I think it does impact, uh, the city to the extent that there are, of course, cannabis businesses within the city who rely on our rural farmers. That's what makes our, our county unique, um, is, is that we have small, uh, craft grow farmers, um, and also just businesses within the city, um, and $52 million in tax revenue that cannabis farmers have paid, uh, to the county. Um, and that is specifically just cannabis taxes, that is not exactly about sales tax and property tax or income tax or anything else. Shell measure S cannabis taxes, $52 million to the county, um, for essential services within the county. Um, so for those reasons, I hope that you, uh, choose to endorse a no vote on measure A today.
Thank you very much.
Members, Mayor, uh, my name is Gabriel Smith. I'm the general manager of Route 101. So as far as speaking to the functioning, I think these guys hit the points. But what I would like to speak to is the fact that, I mean, in the last two years, the cannabis business has been decimated around here. Um, I can speak for that from my say, oh, and so forth. And honestly, I mean, I know that we're one of the biggest taxpayers in town and, I mean, if this goes through, I'm not even sure if we'll stay open, honestly. I mean, we're making the switch in my business currently, but I mean, I'd still like to keep that nice part of it. And it's been horrible the last two years and this is just going to make everything a whole lot worse. And so, I mean, that's money directly out of your guys' pockets. So, please vote no on measure A.
I'll be quick. And, um, my name is Dylan Matole. I'm a farmer from Honeydew, born in Garberville. Spent a lot of time all throughout the Gil River Valley my whole life, and this is where I make my home and work. Um, I think a lot's already been said and probably will be said about the details of this policy. And, and what, what I really just want to say is like, over the last eight years, um, as a farmer, as a citizen, I've engaged in policy. I've spent countless hours in front of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and now more recently gone to the city of Eureka, the city of Arcata last night, the city of Fortuna, and tonight in front of all of you. I want to acknowledge how difficult your job is and applaud you all for being willing to take this job on and listen to these sort of, um, you know, impactful things that in, that our county deals with. I also would like to just point out that like, what measure A is doing is undoing hours and hours and hours of this work exactly like what you're doing and doing the hard work of discussing little details about policy, about what to do, about contracts, all of these sort of things. You know, that's the process that we make policy with. And measure A just kind of circumvents all that. So I would think that, you know, I caution everyone to consider the, you know, the, the precedent that this sets where you can work as a body of government, representing your citizens for hours and hours and hours and years in this case, and then have two wealthy retired individuals fund a policy, a volume of policy, 38 pages, that will impact that and just really undo and supersede all that work. So I think it's dangerous precedent to set, um, for how we do like super complex land use policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Craig Johnson. My wife and I own a small farm in Southern Humboldt, um, under 10,000 square feet. And that's exactly what the proponents ran this ballot measure on. We're here to help, meaning. We don't need this kind of help. They talk about their initiative, having cannabis with tea. You know, that's a bite I don't want to have. And, and I brought one of the maps that they use on their website. This is directly off of their website. And it's, uh, shows all these green dots and those dots are the concentration of cannabis farms in the different watersheds. Okay, um, one thing is that the devil's really in the details here. If you looked down at the legend, the legend shows that one of these dots is about a mile and a half. Okay, so they're representing that all of this green is miles and miles and miles of farms. Okay, today, right now, if you were to take all the farms left, the legal farms that came through the front door, sat before boards, got inspected by Fish and Wildlife, all the other agencies, they would fit into a half of a square mile. That, so you can have a little perspective, that's about your main street from Bridge to South Bagger off ramp down here and just a little bit beyond the freeway, here to square that off right there. So that's all the farms that are left. So this type of policy isn't really necessary anymore. Like, we've, we've already been fully regulated down to almost nothing. So I want to share one other point with you all, and that is through the campaigning, we've gone from the Rotary in Garberville to Orix, uh, you know, gas station, just trying to really connect with everyone. And what this has done is, is put a yard sign in our front yard. Um, and I have a couple older gentlemen that walk past my house and one of them with a cane and, and he shared with me his, how cannabis has helped his dying wife and if there's any tincture for sleep these days. And then the other neighbor drives by my house after his morning coffee and he's an extreme beret, served in Vietnam, and he shows his button, no on measure A. That's the badge he's wearing now. He's so proud of what we're doing. He is just fully show, he's showing full support. So like this community and all the other communities and all the people that walk past our homes, they really want us to succeed for so many different reasons. Everyone has a different reason. Whether it's the medicine or the economic gain or just the right of a property right. So we ask you tonight to join us and, you know, oppose measure A. And if you do so by the end of the night, we will, uh, memorialize that with your token. So, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Rio Del City Council, Mayor Garmes, everybody else here. I'm Andy Riggs. I'm also here to oppose Measure A. I'm a local business owner. I went to school in Scotia. I still have a special place in my heart for the Panthers, so. And I also graduated from Fortuna High School in class of two thousand. I grew up in this area and I still call it home. I live down in Stafford on our family's farm. That's also where I operate. One of my businesses is a small three thousand square foot cannabis garden. As a kid growing up in this area and attending Fortuna High School, I never quite imagined I'd be where I am today doing what I do, albeit I am very grateful and I'm very blessed. By the time I was a senior in high school, I had imagined I'd continue on to college to pursue a career in forestry, a subject that I had grown a passion for under the tutelage of Mr. Myers, a longtime ag teacher at Fortuna High School. Many of my peers also considered this career, and many also knew we always had the mill to fall back on, college didn't work out. We all know what happened to our mills with new regulations, a tough economy and bankruptcies shrinking the timber industry to the shadow of what it once was. Sadly, the loss of industry is very familiar to Humboldt County. And the latest, no matter how we may individually feel about it, is cannabis. The reason of a prop has never been easy work, yet it is renewable and it is a sustainable endeavor. The money that used to flow in from cannabis would spread through our communities to our local establishments like restaurants, car dealerships, and it helped bolster up our local economies. Although our local cannabis industry is also now a fraction of what it once was, it still brings money, hope, and opportunity to our area. I believe the city of Rio Del understands this, and that is something I for one greatly appreciate. However, Measure A does threaten to take that away and any future hope of establishing a viable and sustainable industry in Humboldt County. Perhaps what scared me the most about this measure is the precedent it will set. This thirty-eight page initiative will amend thirteen pages of our county general plan. And if you'd like to take the word of the proponents themselves, the idea that next other industry in agriculture could be next. Let me quote one of the proponents, Mr. Thurman, from last Thursday's debate at Cal Poly Humboldt, which you can view on YouTube at the channel titled H-I-I-M-R. Here's the quote. There is a strong desire among many factions to rethink enforcement and environment with respect to cannabis and with respect to other areas of agriculture that could be doing the same sort of things that some of us are concerned about with cannabis. And so when the EIR says that water quality and water flow is going to be monitored routinely, we want to see that. We want to see if the water is in fact clean, and if it isn't, where is it not clean? Is it from a dairy? We all, we all want clean water, of course, but we see where this is going. That sounds to me like Measure A is Pandora's box, except once this box is opened, it cannot be closed. Yes, Humboldt County produces some of the finest cannabis, but it also produces some of the finest dairy products, beef, and timber. If anybody here is following what's occurring in Europe right now, they're farmers, we'd understand where this might all be going, and we can't let it go there. That is why the Humboldt Republican Party, the Democrats, the Greens, and our very own Sheriff Hansel all agree we must stop Measure A for the good of all and not allow it to pass to benefit just the few Neeland retirees and their Bay Area law firm who wrote this measure. Thank you all for your time and allowing me to speak, and I urge the city to oppose this measure. Thank you.
Welcome. Hi. Thank you for having us. My name's Cassandra Chalilla Pharoah, and I am a small farmer, and I also own a home for a distribution of labor and processing facility in Eureka. The proponents of this measure have consistently said that the opponents don't understand the intention and/or misinterpreting of the initiative. I can read. I've made it this far in the compliance process, and if this measure passes, I will have to comply with what this law says. The planning department wrote that, you know, it's basically gonna be impossible to enforce. And so, Ross Gordon, CGA, Policy Director, is a genius. You know, he interprets a lot of those legalese for us, and we talk about it weekly. And if that's, you know, the only thing they keep going to is that we're just misinterpreting the intention when the opponents just have the facts and figures and data. So, yeah, we urge you to oppose Measure A. And I do have some stickers if any of you want some. I believe I'm onto you.
Wythe Bushnell, welcome. Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I spoke also at the Fortuna City Council last night and took an opposition against A from early on. I was part of an ad hoc that worked with Mark and Betsy, who are the people that, you know, did this, and tried to work with them to, to change our ordinance, to start a change in our ordinance. But the cannabis ordinance is not perfect, and it is a work in motion, just like any other industry. It needs an opportunity to be able to pivot when necessary. Brand new, or, brand new industries grow and change, and you have to adapt. Something that's tied to the general plan does not allow that, does not allow for that pivoting to happen with the planning department necessary to grow on your business. One thing that has been continually said is that it's not our intent to punish cultivators. But when you, when you create an ordinance and you have to put it into law, and then you have to put it into ordinance form, that takes attorneys and lots of work with attorneys. So it may not be your intent, but how you accomplish that with that ordinance doesn't always work out like you intend. It is proven, it happens all the time. It's scary to me that no other industry has come up against that, this kind of a voter initiative. Why not logging? Why not dairies? Why not alfalfa bills? Well, I think we heard the other night that maybe it is going that way. That that will hamper any kind of economic reform in this county. It's not about cannabis, really. It's about the policies and the way it's being driven and directed. Cannabis is legal. You don't like it. Some people don't like it, I understand that, but you have to get along and coexist. And you can't stifle people just because of what they choose to do in life. And it's not fair that people have come from two thousand sixteen to current, followed every rule, regulation, and now are gonna have to try to pivot again. The sheriff opposes this because it will cause people to go back underground, if you want to say that. And that's where a lot of environmental damage happened. Their intent is environmental work. It's gonna do the opposite. People can't take it. And it already, the boundaries of what, how people economically are making it look very slim. You want to add more that they have to do or can't do, more restrictions, more permitting. Also, the planning department will have to make these ordinances, and cultivators will have to change according to those ordinances. That cost will go to the, to the cultivator. Nobody does anything for free. So while they're gonna be bound to do that by this Measure A, the cost will be passed once again to the cultivators. I ask that if you can't vote against Measure A this evening, and if you have more questions, please investigate that. Please know what you're talking about. Please call John Bourne, call a neutral party, call an attorney, but really investigate what you, what you're voting on and know that there's a reason that this hasn't happened to any other industry in Humboldt, or very often anywhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, council members and mayor. Thank you. My name's Kelly Clodet. I'm with Mark and Advisors. I've got some handouts here just to make it easier. What I thought I'd do is just take a few minutes to explain such the technical elements of measure for those that are interested in the prohibitions that are outlined in those thirty-eight pages. So for example, it prohibits expansion of any new cultivation-related structures, including ancillary buildings, water storage tanks, ponds, or solar arrays. The result would be that those who have received water and solar tank grants, for example, that require building permits could not be approved by county. It prohibits having more than one cultivation permit per property. The result is farmers with nurseries or processing permits, which are cultivation activities, would be considered non-conforming. Kind of explain that in a moment. It prohibits farms over ten thousand square feet. So those over ten thousand square feet would be considered non-conforming. It prohibits farms from being located on unpaved roads. It requires farms to be located on a category four, that's a paved road with a center stripe, or be considered non-conforming. It prohibits any new permits or modifications for expansion beyond the amount in existence as of March fourth, twenty twenty-two. That's almost two years ago. So the result is there will be no new permits, no modifications to expand any cultivation of any size or amount until the full amount drops below that March twenty-two, twenty-two level. So what is non-conforming? So non-conforming means to be out of compliance with the county code. It means that the county will not be allowed to approve any future land permits, amendments, or modifications until the site comes into compliance with the requirements of the county code. So the result is these non-conforming farms will be frozen in time. They can exist, but will not be allowed to make any changes or improvements, including environmental upgrades that require county approval. So if you have more than one permit, if you have an unpaved road, if you're over ten thousand square feet, you will not be allowed to make any changes because the county will not be able to approve it. So who will be impacted? I'll give you a couple of examples. Huckleberry Hill Farms is a supplier to Willie Nelson's brand, Willie's Reserve, and is a vocal advocate for sustainable farming by providing educational tourists to visitors through their county tourism permit. This farm has an outdoor permit along with a nursery permit to share their genetics with other farmers. The company would not be allowed to make any upgrades or changes to their site, or they would have to lose one of those permits due to not being allowed more than one permit per parcel. Another example, Moonmade Farms. This is a regenerative, sun-certified, sun-and-earth-certified, DM-Pure-certified farm. It works to contribute more to the environment than it takes from the ecosystem. It has plans, right now, to expand its solar array by adding a fifty thousand dollar solar system, which is partially funded through cannabis state grants. Their farm is sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four square feet. Measure A would render this farm non-conforming and force them to reduce their farm by forty percent to ten thousand square feet or cancel moving forward with permitting their solar project because it would be an expansion to the renewable energy resources. And finally, I just want to give you a quick comparison chart here comparing cannabis to other agriculture in the county. The average farm size of a non-cannabis farm in Humboldt County is seven hundred and thirty-one acres. The average farm size of a cannabis farm is fifteen thousand six hundred and thirteen square feet. That's point three-sixth of an acre. So if you think about the total land use for farming in Humboldt County, it's about twenty-seven percent of the land. The amount used for cannabis, as was mentioned by Craig in his chart, it's about point zero one six percent. That's how much of permitted land is now, right now, legal in Humboldt County. The amount of farms over an acre, because this is supposed to stop industrial size growth, the amount over an acre, a hundred percent of all non-cannabis farms are over an acre. There's only two percent of farms in, of cannabis farms that are over an acre. And the median-sized farm, so the typical farm, agricultural farm in Humboldt County is sixty acres. That's a typical farm, non-cannabis. Typical cannabis farm is ten thousand square feet, like Craig's. This measure is just overzealous, overreaching, overrestrictive. It doesn't support our farmers. It doesn't support our local economy. And so we ask that you support the letter of opposition and continue to allow this industry to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Meads with Mark and Advisors. I'll be very grateful. You folks know us. We moved into town two years ago. We made a major investment, are continuing still to make major investments in our building. We have a very lively, busy consulting firm in the cannabis industry. I heard earlier that it really would affect Rio Del. It would, because it would so dramatically affect our business that we would pack up our business. We would have to shut our doors. So I encourage you, look at collateral damage, look at all these farmers. We want to be here, we're doing the right thing. These folks are taking care of the land. They're not destroying it. If this measure passes, as Kelly mentioned, there will be no more amendments, no more expansions. Those are the things that we do. We won't, we won't have anything else to do except close your reports. So please, please vote no on Measure A. Please.
I think we've covered everyone on this trouble too, Rich. You got nothing on that?
They think they're smarter than I am.
They don't know about them. They're very smart. So are there any hand raised? There is a hand that looks, okay? They just need to unmute themselves there, star six. So please unmute yourself.
Two five three zero.
Thank you. Two five three zero. Please unmute star six and be your, introduce yourself and be your peace.
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, my name, okay, good. My name's Mark Thurman. I'm one of the co-sponsors of Measure A. And I'm urging the council and mayor not to vote no on this measure. It appears your decision is based in part, if not extensively, by the analysis of the county. The analysis is seriously flawed, as we've indicated in the packet document that you have. I'll give you a couple of examples. The initiative does not prevent solar panels or water tanks. In fact, it requires water tanks, and it actually states that if anything light panels is restricted, that would be a violation of the measure itself. The initiative also does not add new permit renewal requirements or processes. This is already in existence in the current ordinances. The initiative does not prohibit farmers from obtaining dispensary or bed and breakfast or tourism permits. It actually appeal, applies only to cannabis cultivation permits, no other kinds of permits. The initiative does not require any existing farms to upgrade roads to category four standards as, as the analysis claims. Only new or expanded permits under two point O would require an engineer validation. So another incorrect statement. Initiative does not prohibit farms from improving facilities or improving efficiency, contrary to the statements made about non-conforming use. It doesn't prohibit improvements. It simply stops expansion. In addition, the county's errors and falsehoods that shown, shown in this analysis are not limited to the analysis itself. The comments are not neutral or fair representations of the facts, as is required by law. Rather, it appears they're intended to influence and undercut the public support for the initiative, in other words, to take part in this political campaign right now. The distribution of the analysis or its flawed conclusions would even violate the Political Reform Act. So this is, this is a serious problem with this county analysis. The pervasive misstatements, mischaracterizations, misrepresentations of the initiative advanced here in, in that county analysis create a strong impression that the analysis was not really intended to provide a neutral or balanced factual information to the public, but rather to influence public opinion on a ballot measure that's now before us. So I would ask you to read carefully both the initiative and the H-C-R-A response, which is in your packet. And I would expect that the Rio Del City Council does not really want to make an important decision like this based on the document, document that makes such false claims and misrepresentations. I'd also like to correct some statements that were made earlier, that this isn't about just two old retired fuddy-duddies that didn't have anything better to do. to do. It's about over 7,000 people that signed this initiative contacting 10,000 people, many hundreds of other people participated in this. The major provisions of this were crafted in collaboration, and you're probably not going to believe this, in collaboration with the Growers Alliance, specifically Madeline De Laup, over several Zoom meetings and emails. So this is not something that was created out of a vacuum or a void. So please, as was noted by Supervisor Bushnell, read this carefully and think about it and look at the analysis and compare what the analysis says with what we say the initiative says and where the analysis goes wrong. And a lot of those false statements in the analysis are being perpetuated by what we hear tonight. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Are there any other hand raised? Are there any emails? No emails? Welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nick Erickson. I'm owner of Full Moon Farms. I've been a resident of Riodale since 1996. My family's been in county since 1900. I wasn't going to speak just because of the redundancy of so many points, but after Mark decided to call in, and thanks for showing up, Mark, along with his 7,000 supporters that he's claimed to have in every function that we've gone to, it's been two or three of them showing up, if they show up. Talking on his falsehoods, I would like to point out that when we were formulating ordinance 1.0, there was public forums where everybody could come together and try to formulate where these regulations are going to, what they're going to look like, how they're going to be enforced. They didn't show up. They didn't put any that they're inputting to on 1.0 or 2.0. It wasn't until they realized they might have a legal farm in their backyard in their neighborhood that they decided to take action. That farm never even broke ground. They went through with this initiative, even though that farm was pulled out of the permitting process for that farm. It's kind of snowballed out from there. Then they go to get their signatures, their 7,000 signatures on their initiative. They presented this as protecting the small farms, protecting the environment. It was a Trojan horse. This is 38 pages of legalese that it took the county six weeks to dissect. The average signature, yeah, when you're gathering signatures, the average person signing these isn't going to understand 38 pages at a glance when they're walking through the county fair to sign this. This is how they gathered signatures. At the average, there's only 200 that had to be verified out of that 7,000. So they keep claiming they have all the support. Where are they? If you look at the list of support that the vote no measure A has behind us, it's for a reason. I'm sorry, I can't tell the passion he brings out. So anyway, I'm a long time county member. I spend my main year. And I just urge you strongly to please vote no on support voting no on measure A. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm closing the discussion and bringing it back to the council. Are there any questions from council members?
Mute yourself, we can hear your comments. I was raised that you don't share your opinions on votes, you don't try and influence people, that you trust them to read and understand things and kind of vote their conscience. And I teach my students the same thing in school. And I want to thank Supervisor Bushnell because she reiterated the same thing, be an educated voter. When I came in here, I mean, it was an obvious no on this measure. It's decisive, it's draconian, it's poorly written, narrowly defined, it's excessively restrictive, it's unnecessarily redundant. And yes, I read it three times. And I don't need a legal degree to see that. What the heck? And now, I didn't count how many people were out here against measure A, but I can count how many people are here for it. And I appreciate how strongly you felt when you drafted this, that you could meet face to face on Zoom and email, however many times we took. I don't think I'm qualified to sway anyone's vote. I don't think I'm qualified to tell them how they should vote. And I don't think any celebrity organization, government, or should. However, I will support this one because, I mean, this is insane. You're going to drive Humboldt County bankrupt. So it's a definite opposal for me.
Okay, I did read the initiative. I've been following this for the last, what, two years since the beginning? I reread the initiative before this. I reread the county analysis before this, and I did read the literature that was sent, the rebuttals to the analysis that were emailed to me that came from the proponents of measure A. I have a lot of talking points that have been covered, so I'm going to breeze right through those. I think the need for flexibility is a big one. I think it is a new industry and we need to be able to change with the times. So that's number one. Number two is the idea that has already been brought up of undoing all the work that has gone into transitioning from a black market to a legal market. I've lived in Humboldt County a very, very long time. I've seen it. The other thing I did to get ready for this was to actually talk to my community and go out and seek people out. And I've even talked to people who are in favor of measure A too, so I have definitely, you know, covered my bases as far as I'm concerned. The industry is already strained. I don't think that we need to, you know, everybody's worked really hard to come into compliance already. My most important point is that my job as an elected official, regardless of what my own personal opinions may or may not be about cannabis in any way, is that I'm here to speak for the people of Riodale, the people in my jurisdiction. All it takes is one lap around town and it's no on measure A signs all over the place. The people I've talked to say, no, we don't want this, my residents, our businesses don't want this, our farmers don't want this. So even if I didn't have any problems with measure A when I read it myself, hearing from the voters of Riodale, the businesses of Riodale, the farmers of Riodale, nobody wants this. And so then it is my duty as an elected to speak for those people. And so I would definitely vote no on measure A and vote in favor of supporting the letter opposing measure A. I know it's confusing. That's how we do things. Okay.
This takes me back to 1960. Yeah, we had a lot of fun. But the, and my views have changed considerably since that time. It's not a secret I was opposed to Riodale's ordinance. I was opposed to State California Prop 64. That stuff passed, the people spoke, the citizens of Riodale spoke, and the election that we had, there was more of a, it was more of, I guess, a suggestion to us that really, it wasn't a binding thing, but it spoke their view and their view of even the more conservative, sort of, not all of them, but of the more conservative people was that they wanted to see money coming into Humboldt, into Riodale. Riodale's city has a very good ordinance. It's modeled after the county's ordinance. And through all this work that they've done, I think Riodale's been successful. I think the county has put in an awful lot of time trying to make this work. And listening to Sheriff Hansel, who I respect a lot, his big concern was that it would push people back into the illegal. And that was one of the big arguments that came before this city, of people that had worked in the timber industry, the fishing industry, or different industries. And the only way they were going to be able to make a living was through the cannabis industry. And so to push that back into the illegal, one of the things that will take care of this, I've always believed that, is the economic whatever we might call our economic system and what the people feel. That really fuels what happens with the cannabis industry. And one of the things that, if I understand it correctly, I'm going to see some heads nod to me, but the illegal grows have not really decreased. I mean, they have increased. You know, there's a lot of them out there.
Less than 500 this year.
Yeah, we.
Down from 15,000 according to sheriff and planning to less than 2,000 total, including all the legal, which is about 775-ish.
So there were about, they figured around 1,000 when they started, and they eradicated a lot this summer.
And so, listening to that, and I take, again, I trust people in this room that are involved in and support us. I'm not going to make it a long thing. I think the activities of the county in particular has done their job to try to make a viable legal industry and follow an awful lot of guidelines and restraints. People have spent a lot of money trying to do it legally. And to try to push people back into the illegal or put them on a business isn't productive. So I'm going to go along with the other council members that I've heard is that I will support this letter opposing Proposition A. And also the comment that I think this should be big is there's, the physical support of people that are in favor of this don't seem to be around, like they're doing it through Zoom or emails. They're not here coming down, you know, it's hard to get anybody down to this building for anything. And so they're not, they're not out there coming around except for telephone conversations or Zoom, whatever, so. I oppose to Major A as well, and I'll just leave it at that.
I'm so glad all of you came. It makes a big difference when you can actually hear from the people how it's going to affect them. I really didn't understand half of what he was saying. And I've always been for the cannabis business, and I'm still a bit for the cannabis business. So I'm going to vote no, and I'm voting yes for our letter to support you guys.
Thank you, everything that can be said probably has been said. I do believe that the legal growers in Humboldt County have done everything they could do to come into compliance, and I truly believe that. And so it doesn't feel like there's anything to regulate other than tweaks here and there over time because things change. And of course, we tweak everything over time. But to come in, I mean, I know Riodale had over 100 meetings. I know the county had a ton of meetings. I know any city that's addressed this issue has had multiple, multiple meetings. So it isn't like it just came out of nowhere and Blake, it was there and everyone decided, okay, we're going to do this legally. There were arguments, there were fights, there were ballouts. There was a lot going on, and we came to this decision as cities, as the county, and I believe that the growers have done what they could to fall in line with what is being required of them. So I don't feel that there's any need to go any further. I don't feel like there's any need for me to, you know, rattle on much because everything really had pretty much been covered. But I did ask the city manager to bring this to us, the council, so because I thought it was very important that we take a stand for the people who are here, the growers who are here, the people who have supported the city, the county, and for all the work that we have all done to get to this place. So I think that that's it. Everyone spoken?
Sorry. Say one more thing. Take two more seconds, I'm sorry. I married into Humboldt County, so I haven't had a lifetime in San Luis, but my father-in-law had a logging industry here. I know people in the fishing industry, and I saw what happened to those. And it didn't take me long to figure out what happened. And I appreciate all of you showing up to keep this from happening because we don't want this just to become Northern San Francisco. We don't want to be driven out of here so that they can build high-priced mansions and everything else, because it's a beautiful place, and that seems like what they're doing. So thank you.
Well, is there a motion to approve the letter of opposition to measure A?
So moved.
We have a motion in there, second. We vote motion. Get that off there. Motion carries five zero. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for listening and thank you for your support. Thank you.
Now, we all want to go into the.
Permission, folks, back you guys. Sure. Thank you, guys. There's your badge. I don't want to put a whole nut shirt on. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. I'm going to put a whole nut shirt on. And I ran out. I got more than five. I'll give you mine.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, thank you. And now we move on to the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 402-2024 related to false alarms and fees, page 100, the article in practice.
I'll take this one for the crowd that stayed. Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. This is the second reading, proposed ordinance 402-2024, the fat machine, false alarms and fees. This was established, false alarm fees, in Riodale, the initial code, we don't have a specific state. Just to read some of the things that we talked about in the first reading, the Riodale Police Department is responsible for responding to residential alarm, several down our jurisdiction. The majority of the alarms that we respond to are water mains due to non-maintenance of the equipment and just employee error. We discussed this with the nuisance committee, and they supported and recommended city council adopt the false alarm fees. And this wouldn't start until January 2025. 2025. It would also require a permit status, and it will be free the first year, and then every two years it will be a true dollar fee. And again, what this is addressing is the excessive false alarms. So somebody has a false alarm, you're given two false alarm chances. That third one would be an incurable fee. And so it's not a my making thing, it's only you think about $20 during two years. That's not very much.
There are other questions? Welcome to the vote. Oh, we did over this last. I don't have any other questions. Any question? Any, either of you have a question? Just to reiterate, this is for the commercial alarms that are triggering a police response rather than just regular alarm. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any hand raised? Any emails?
Nope.
Then I will ask for a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 402-2024.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Measure, motion passed as five zero. And our final item, and I will ask if anyone's going to need, is Kevin on the line? Is he?
He should be.
Okay.
He might be asleep.
I couldn't find my glasses. I can't see if he's up there. Okay. So introduction, first reading of ordinance number 403-2024, amending the city zoning regulations to, one, define and allow for residential care homes of six or fewer persons by right in all residential zones. Two, update the definition of family to mean one or more persons living together in a dwelling unit. And three, provide for farm employees housing consistent with state law and zoning that allow agriculture. and zoning that allow agriculture as a permitted use pursuant to the State Employee Housing Act. Community Director Caldwell.
Mayor Garant, members of the council. Um, this actually starts on page 118 of your, 117, I'm sorry, of your packet. These are implementation programs in our adopted state-approved housing element. The recommended changes that we're recommending within these changes is actually required by the state of California. And we actually have the option of not implementing these changes. However, we would not be subject to or available for grant funding. So, we're recommending that we actually at least approve the first reading to, uh, update the definition of residential care homes, to update the definition of family, and then to incorporate the employee housing regulations, which are part of the Health and Safety Code, into our regulations. Again, these are state mandates. If we want to be available to grant funding in the future, um, we would recommend that we adopt these modified regulations so that we are available to make application for future grant funding. Um, they're pretty simple regulations themselves. In fact, I believe if you just look at the, uh, page 118 of your packet, it, it pretty much identifies and summarizes the three changes we're recommending herein. Again, the residential care homes, the definition of housing, and the employee housing regulations. And in my opinion, these are, are simple regulations that we recommend the city council adopt and at least continue this for a second reading and approval to your meeting of February 20th. If you have any questions, I hope you've had a chance to look over the staff report. I'd be more than happy to answer those questions you may have.
Thank you. Community Development Director Goldwell. Goldwell to the council for questions. Councilor Orr, Councilmember Wilson.
Kevin, um, we already have residential care homes, right? This is just putting them into the ordinance?
We, we do. Um, our definition is actually a little different. Our definition actually refers to residential care facilities, and that's on page 119 of the packet. And those refer to per, for, uh, facilities for more than six persons. The, the amendment would actually, um, allow residential care homes for six or fewer persons as a principally permitted use in the residential zones. And that would be the urban residential, suburban residential, suburban medium, and residential multifamily zones.
Thank you.
Those with, those with more than six persons would still be subject to a new permit requirement.
Thank you, um, Mayor, for thanks.
It's my turn. Um, no, no questions right now, Kevin. It's a first reading. Um, if I find anything, I'll come bother you in your office before the second reading. So, I'm good. It was a long no.
Okay, and, um, it's pretty clear and straightforward to me, so I have no questions. Thank you, Kevin. Um, are there any hand raised? Are there any emails? Uh, any questions? Okay, um, so, thank you, um, Kevin. We're gonna bring it back to council and, um, make a motion, or we're asking for a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
403224.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion carries five zero. And now we come to, thank you, Kevin, uh, council reports.
Mayor Garant? Okay, um, I, my first report is a bummer. Um, I just, I wanted to address the head-on collision that we had a couple miles north of here and how much of a tragedy that is and how much that has affected many, many people in our community, um, and, you know, children at schools, the parents, um, everybody. Um, so I just would, uh, like to throw my heart out to the community and, and anybody who was touched by this tragedy because you don't even have to know people sometimes to feel the weight of that, um, especially the loss of an eight-year-old girl. Um, so my heart goes out to anybody listening and, um, you know, if there's anything anybody needs to help, you know, please let the city know how we can support any efforts that go on for the family, um, of those two people. Um, the school board meeting that I usually attend has been moved as a result of the tragedy. They just have not had enough time to get a packet together. So, that's been moved to Tuesday, uh, February 28th, 7th at 6:00 P.M. I just went to a chamber meeting and they are already talking about Wildwood Days, so. Right, for summer. Um, it's a Western theme, and we don't know exactly what the slogan will be, but get on them cowboy boots because we're doing it. Um, I think that's, I think that's it, right?
Councilmember Orr?
Um, I don't have much to report. I do wanna say, um, I've been thinking about this all night, I'm a little shaky, but Christina, well, it's a bridesmaid in my wedding, so we knew her well, and her family, and her. And I wanna say thank you to Officer House. Um, there's nothing you can do about that. And having, being a combat veteran and having worked on ambulances, you'll never forget it. And there's nothing you can do about it except know that you tried your hardest. Um, but I do know that the community says thank you as well, and that I attended the funeral and the memorial service. And it was nice to see how many people showed up, the principal from the school, um, especially her saying that she saw empathy out of children that she didn't think she would. Um, so yes, it was the community pulling together for someone that my wife knew well. Right, was, thank you. And pass that on, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Um, I have, I have a H2A meeting Thursday. And, um, that's about, I'm trying to think if we had, um, since we last met, I don't have any other counsel or other report.
Thank you. Well, just, um, this Thursday, I have to go to the board of the fire department. And that's about it. Okay, thank you. I have, um, an H2A meeting, um, tomorrow morning. And, um, there is, um, candlelight vigil. No, can you speak to that before, before we leave?
Yeah, um, because this was such a tragedy to people that we know in the community, uh, we've been working with the resource center to, uh, do a memorial service, a candlelight vigil before we get to Memorial Park on Monday at, uh, 6:00 P.M. We've been working with the county to get that, uh, situated. So, we invited people to come on by and share it, and we had talks about that.
Greg, can you extend that to your question if I have?
Yes, we will. I think that would. But again, I thank, thank you guys for your support. Uh, again, one of us was born, was first on the scene and had witnessed that. And, you know, that's one of the days that we hope that we never witness and have to deal with. And, you know, that's something that she's been remembering her whole life. And so, again, if you all support, we'll be able to make the conversation.
Um, and so I think, um, if really want, if there's still seats available, there's, uh, Disaster Preparedness Academy on March 2nd. Um, if, if there's a link to Blue Lake, uh, Blue Lake Casino. If you just go to Blue Lake Casino's website, you'll be able to find that and follow the link. Um, it's, and there's a, um, Spanish-speaking Disaster Preparedness Academy on March 3rd. Um, so that is also, it's Blue Lake, um, is putting, uh, putting both of them on. So, um, go to the website, go to the community center. If you can't sort out how to get the link, go to the community center and they will register you. Um, and hopefully, there's a cap of 25. So, um, I know that there were seats available still this morning. So, uh, check it out if you, um, want to, uh, take that training. There will be an emergency kit bag, um, given out. And, um, to each, to each participant, not like a, a prize. And, um, there's one hundred and thirty, let's see, H2A tomorrow. So, we had a SERC meeting last night at the Fire Hall. There's going to be another SERC meeting for the group on the 28th of February at 6:30 at the Fire Hall. And, um, on February 17th, there's a SERC training at the Fortuna Fire Hall that anyone who's SERC qualified is welcome to go to. Uh, you just have to show up and, and get, and go. So, um, yeah, make sure that's not, that's not a true statement. That's not a true statement. It is, February 17th is at Blue Lake, and you do have to come down there. So, but there is, uh, the SERC training on the 3rd Thursday, which is the 22nd of February, and it's at the Fortuna Fire Hall. And anyone who is SERC qualified can go to that training. Um, and I'm not sure what time it is, but it is after work time. So, I think 6 o'clock is my recollection. And, uh, that's at the Fortuna Fire Hall. Yeah, and I think that's it. And so, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Being adjourned until February 20th at 6:00 P.M. Thank you all, thank you all for coming.
I didn't get their, um, before, I wanted to comment on that on the items. I wanna send you something from AT&amp;T.
Oh, I have to go over it, yeah.